Call and regular meeting with the Buckhannon City Council to order. Ask you to join me in the long distance. Thank you. We will respect the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have Wesley and college students a couple. And we're glad to have you all. And one of the things we ask that you do for us is stand up and face the camera. Give us your name, where you're from, what your major is, please.
I'm Rebecca Lewis. I'm from Buckhannon and my major is business administration.
I'm Colin Gotham. I'm from Upstate New York and I, my major is accounting.
Pleased to have you. Don't see the Boy Scouts. Department reports Mitch. You don't see Mitch? I believe. Jay Hollins here, city engineer.
I wonder where everybody is tonight. Dedicated. Really short, not because there's nobody here this evening, but a lot of projects have been taken off the board, so I'll just hit some highlights. The Army National Guard complex, we had a groundbreaking last week. I'm still working on my drawing. We're doing the final review right now. I hope that was submitted by end of October yesterday, but it looks like we're going to shoot for next Friday for getting everything down to the Bureau of Public Health. Because I'm currently having to stop for a little bit and work on something for Michael, a meets and bounds description of the properties to be annexed into the city. Working on it. Should wrap that meets and bounds description up tomorrow. And then after I'm finished with that, and before I submit the drawings to the Health Department, I want to wrap up the preliminary engineering report that's required for the USDA loan application that we're, you know, currently prepared to send in. Water treatment plant, we cleaned the sediment basin out for the second time this year. We do that twice a year. And Sam Ludlow, the other city engineer, was able to come down and we did a visual inspection of the inside and outsides of the sediment basin. And everything looked well, you know, for a structure that's 60-plus years old. Nothing to new. There's a report on Island Avenue. Couple house cleaning items I forgot to mention last month. The Buckhannon Water Supply Dam, you know, our little dam over here on the island. We've received our certificate of approval of the dam for the upcoming year. It was a little late in getting here from them, the damn, the damn division of the Department of Environmental Protection. That's what they are, sorry. But waiting for that to come through. We have that, so we're certified through July 1st of 2013, sorry. Nothing new to report on McDonald's Route 20 lane widening. Transfer station, as I mentioned last month, it's been put on hold due to the insufficient funds at this time. We also received our renewed permit for these landfill closure. You know, we have to do that update every five years. I sent that permit application in January 23rd and we finally received approval for it last month. Just wanted to mention that. North Ridge Development, which is the access road out at Lowe's. The building permit was issued the first week of October and work immediately began on the access road, but it's come to a screeching halt. They're hoping to wrap it up before the winter sets in because the asphalt plants are going to close in a couple of weeks and they're hoping to complete the overlay of the asphalt. And finally, an update on the public safety complex. The wiring of the complex on the police side still continues. We've got all the wire and everything pulled through the walls and now they're starting to work on the ceiling fixtures and all that. I had to bid out a data cabling installation project and that's for the internet TV coax cable. That was, contract was awarded to Amon Valley Technologies out of Morgantown, West Virginia. They were the successful, low bidder. They came in a couple of weeks ago, wrapped it up in a day. They do have to come back though, because once the drywall is installed and the computer server, the off-site computer server is installed down the public safety complex, they have to come back and make sure all the pools and everything work, you know, to each of the data ports in each of the rooms. Once that's complete, upcoming tasks include installation of the drywall. We hope to start that in the next two weeks. And then I want to bid out three subcontracts. One for the HVAC system, one for the fire suppression system, which is a sprinkler system required in the building due to its size, and then the installation of the fire alarm system. Would like to, I'm hoping to have those packages ready to go before Christmas so that they can do that work over the winter and then we can move on. And then finally, once that is done, we want, our personnel, city personnel, would like to get back in there early spring of next year. And again, the installation of the suspended ceiling and the ceiling grids, as well as the light fixtures and then putting on the finishing room finishes. But that's my update. I mean, it's a, it's a quick one. We knocked a lot of projects out last month and all entertaining questions.
Well, buddy. Thank you, Jay.
Mitch? Jerry?
Zombie Officer Rich Clay.
One thing I might note is with the storm damage and perhaps individuals hiring contractors for repair work, that they use some caution in making sure that individuals or contractors are state licensed. There should not be a concern about getting money upfront. That's typically not required from contractors that are ethical in their practice. Maybe get an estimate or two if you can, but use some caution. Don't jump into maybe selecting a contractor for repairs that might need to be done. This is frequently a time when less than ethical contractor individuals go out there and try to get some money upfront to do a project and then never show up again. So just, just use some common sense. If you have any concerns about a particular contractor being licensed or not, we can look that information up for you at City Hall. That's all I have.
Question for Rich. Couple of late arrivals. I know you're college students, you just got that look in your eyes.
Yes, sir.
One of the things that we do here is we ask you to stand up, face the camera and give us your name, hometown and what you're major in.
Okay, I'm Noah Cottrell. My hometown's from Charleston, West Virginia. And I'm, my major is undecided right now.
My name is Danza O'Leary. I'm from Prince George's County, Maryland, Caryville, Maryland. My major is business administration with a minor of communication.
Pleased to have you.
Thank you.
Colin.
Thank you, Mayor. Most of what I will take up with the council this evening will be under your new business with ordinance 369 pertaining to our water raids. As a result of ordinance 368 that the council passed at the last meeting, we're working on the deed to convey the small parcel of property over on the Buckhannon River to Patty Jo Weimer. There's also a component remaining relative to the First Community Bank property swap that we did a while back. There's going to be a small sliver of property basically in back of the courthouse that the Upshur County Commission is scheduled to dedicate to us. I need to prepare the deed of dedication and then give that to Mr. Parker so that he can present that to the commission. I've not done that yet, but we will soon. Still making slow progress on the electric ordinance. As I mentioned last meeting, water has really come to trump electricity, at least in this instance. And then the, the last substantial thing, I was waiting for Chief Tacey to be here so we could give a combined report on our discussion about offering the council the opportunity to mandate that first responders live either within Upshur County, within X miles, 10, 15 miles of the epicenter of Buckhannon. We have some different models to present to you soon and I would assume either at the next meeting or at least at the next meeting that Mitch is here will make that presentation. That's all I have this evening unless you all have questions for me.
Any questions for Dave? Thank you, Dave. In your package you have a thank you note from Progressive Bank, invitation from the National Guard for the groundbreaking, which already took place, a letter from a citizen regarding traffic signals. Consent agenda includes approval of minutes of regular meeting on October 18th, special meeting on October 23rd, and wiring permits, payment of the bills, approval of Boy Scout troop and PAC 128 food drive. There's a letter in your packet. And approval of the Christmas parade for Friday, December 7th at 7:00 PM. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Same.
Motion made, is there a second? Motion made and seconded. Discussion, all in favor signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. As have it. Back to you, Dave.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight you have as a follow-up to our discussion at the last council meeting two weeks ago, I'm proposing to you this evening the first reading of ordinance 369. This is in keeping with the memo that was distributed at the last meeting. So we read the ordinance by caption and also read the whereas paragraphs quickly and I'll go through very cursorily with the various articles that comprise this ordinance and let you all consider it on first reading. This is ordinance number 369 of the City of Buckhannon. And ordinance one, amending ordinances number 207, 228, and 342 of the City of Buckhannon. And two, specifically establishing new water rates and charges for water distribution services provided by the Water Board of the City of Buckhannon. Whereas the current rates and charges of the Water Board of the City of Buckhannon for providing water distribution services, as were previously adopted by city ordinances number 207, 228, and 342, are presently insufficient to maintain the high quality of water distribution services offered by the Board and city to the residents of Buckhannon and surrounding Upshur County. And, whereas the Board and city have not sought a water rate increase since 2007. And, whereas the Board and city's cost of providing water distribution services has increased substantially since 2007. And, whereas the city's opportunities to improve and maintain its water distribution operations are greatly impeded given current revenues realized from the collection of current rates and charges. And, whereas the Board and the city recently requested Tietrick &amp; Bartlett, P L L C, Certified Public Accountants and Consultants, hereinafter referred to as Tietrick &amp; Bartlett, to perform an independent rate study, which study was undertaken with recommendations being submitted to the Board and city, all as is evidenced by that certain written report dated June 30, 2012, tendered to both the Board and city. And, whereas the Tietrick &amp; Bartlett report was presented and discussed by the Water Board during a regularly convened public meeting of the Board on October 11, 2012, the report urging the Board and city to adopt the rates recommended therein. And, whereas the Water Board formally resolved during its regularly convened meeting of October 11, 2012, to immediately recommend to the city council that the city increase Buckhannon's rates and charges for water distribution services pursuant to the aforementioned report of Tietrick &amp; Bartlett, said proposed rate and charge schedule being hereinafter described and set forth pursuant to Article 2 hereof. And, whereas the council of the City of Buckhannon is authorized pursuant to the statutory provisions of Chapter 8, Article 13, Section 13, and Chapter 24, Article 2, Section 4B of the West Virginia Code as amended, to impose by ordinance upon the users of water distribution services such reasonable rates, fees, and charges as shall be collected in the manner specified by ordinance. And, whereas the council of the City of Buckhannon deems the rates and charges proposed by the Water Board of the City of Buckhannon and as are set out in the aforementioned June 30, 2012, Tietrick &amp; Bartlett report and further which rates and charges are described and set forth pursuant to Article 2 hereof, to be just and reasonable. And, whereas the statutory provisions of Chapter 8, Article 11, Section 3, Paragraph 1, and Chapter 8, Article 13, Section 13 of the West Virginia Code as amended, specifically provide that the collection of fees of any kind by a municipality shall be by ordinance. And finally, whereas the council of the City of Buckhannon desires in all respects to comply with the statutes of the State of West Virginia and further with the administrative rules and regulations of the PSC insofar as the establishment of new water distribution rates and charges is concerned, now therefore being ordained and enacted by the council of the City of Buckhannon as follows. What follows under the Article, Article 1, the findings of council, it's essentially a repetition of the whereas paragraphs, only putting them in findings form. And the all-important article in this ordinance is Article 2. The Public Service Commission requires us to identify the current rates. And as you see, on the left-hand column under Article 2, we have the various, the type of customer slash service. And over to the right-hand column, current rate, that is the pre-January 1, 2012 rate. If this ordinance is approved by the council, it would be affected, the new rates would become effective on January 1. I'm sorry, you know, I've got a mistake in there. It should be January 1, 2013. Mr. Doss proved this for me. It's always his fault. Anyway, yes, January 1, 2013. So as we go through, everyone that has been with the city for some time, you know that we have a minimum bill based upon 2,000 gallons of usage. If you look down at, oh, there's a provision here for the minimum bill. Actually, actually the minimum bill provision is part of our tariff. It wasn't part of our ordinance that we did in 2007, but it will now become a part of the ordinance and hence the tariff in 2013. So the second part, as we look at the, about the middle of page four, you see the type of customer slash service and the new rates, which reflect depending upon the type of service that we're offering, either a 15% increase or a 24% increase to the affected customers.
You have a short document.
The new rate ought to also be 2013 again, or I'm sorry, yeah, 2013 again. I'm sorry, Mayor.
You have a short document. We're on page five.
Oh, yeah. I'm using the official legal, not that short communistic stuff that Mr. Clemens put it on. It's the regular legal-sized paper that I'm, that I'm using.
Thank you, Mayor. Not the old face and the tennis stuff.
Oh, goodness. As you drop down to Article 3, it's the authorizing article that allows the mayor to prepare and direct me to file everything that we need to do to amend our tariff. Article 4 specifically references that we are amending the previous water distribution ordinances only insofar as these new rates are concerned. Article 5, Public Service Commission and Water Board Rules and Regulations. I always think this is an important paragraph. Occasionally, we do adopt with our utility operations, certain internal day-to-day rules and regulations. We are permitted to do that by the Public Service Commission and this just reiterates the law. It's a short paragraph. Let me read it. This ordinance is adopted by the City of Buckhannon with the express intention of complying with the rules and regulations of the West Virginia Public Service Commission. Notwithstanding the immediately aforementioned intention, this ordinance shall not prohibit the Water Board of the City of Buckhannon from establishing, applying, and or amending from time to time the Board's own rules and regulations, which are not inconsistent with PSC rules and regulations, which Board established rules and regulations are promulgated to facilitate the administration and operation of the city's water distribution system. Article 6 is the standard severability article. Article 7 sets forth the effective date. Some of you will note that typically by charter, our ordinance, unless otherwise provided by state code, is affected 30 days after adoption of the ordinance. In these utility situations, it's 45 days at the earliest. Our 45 days after November 15 actually comes up to the first day after that 45-day period would be December 31. And to facilitate easier situations with our billing and the whole bit, we just bumped it over to January 1, 2013 as being the effective date. So this is the first of two readings. If you act favorably upon it tonight, I will read it by caption only at the next meeting. And then we do our preliminary filing with the Public Service Commission and go from there. I would note that if you do approve this on first reading tonight, I already have a legal advertisement ready to go to be sent electronically as well as physically delivered to both newspapers. There is one new provision that was pointed out to me by attorney Wendy Braswell with the Public Service Commission. She initially told me that this new provision only applied to sewer tariffs, not to water tariffs. I did a little further digging and determined that it's necessary also with water tariffs. We are now required, if there are two newspapers published in your county, one is supposed to be identified as the Republican newspaper, the other one is supposed to be identified as the Democratic newspaper, and we are required to now publish our pre-adoption and post-adoption notices on PSC matters in both newspapers. So I've prepared stuff for both the Record Delta and the Intermountain that will be physically delivered and electronically transmitted.
Who requires that, Dave?
I'm sorry?
What is the body that requires that?
The Public Service Commission.
I mean, that's just one more example of, well, these ridiculous regulations.
It adds to our, I mean, these, these legal ads are not cheap. They, they cost us, you know, a couple of hundred bucks and now if you got to do it in two papers, it's one of those things.
But the Intermountain is not published in Upshur County. It's not domicile here.
It's, I, I attempted to argue that point with Public Service Commission Council and they said we should publish it in both papers, so.
Should or shall?
Well, I'm not going to mince words when it comes to your PSC legal counsel because we have, over the past 30 years, there has never been a tariff ordinance with waste collection, water, or sewage that the PSC has not adopted and confirmed. And I'd rather keep our track record intact as much as we possibly can. The point is, is when you see, when you see it, if you're looking at the Intermountain and you say, well, gee, why did he do that? Why did we put it in both newspapers? That seems to be an unnecessary cost. It's now required by the Public Service Commission.
I think, I think citizens ought to go ahead and just write their public service commissioners and tell them how ridiculous it is. That's just really stupid.
I think so too, because even in the election process, they're required to publish in the local newspaper, which is the Record Delta.
That's right, that's right. Any, any other ordinance that we adopt that requires a legal ad? The one newspaper is sufficient.
I mean, I, I don't want to make a big issue of this, but I would like to know, you know, get the attorney's name and address and I'd just like to know the logic behind that kind of rule.
Well, don't kill the message.
I understand.
I would imagine it has to do with larger cities that have the two strong papers or one, like in Charleston where I imagine they want to ensure that everyone reads this or, I'm not sure that's where it comes from.
Although that said, I think the two Charleston papers are owned by the same person.
They are.
And the intelligence or news registry.
They are.
Same Ogden Publishing Company, yes. And so, yeah. It's, I, yeah, I'm certainly, just so we're clear, Ms. Braswell's a former student of ours from Westland. So I'm not, I'm not begrudging her passing on the information to us. I think she is citing good rules and regulations for PSA. We might disagree with them, but we'll comply with them.
Well, I'm not picking on the attorney. I'm just picking on the commission, so.
Yep, I agree with you. It's my recommendation that you consider this on first reading and pass it accordingly.
Motion to approve ordinance number 369 on first reading.
So moved.
Motion made, is there a second? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? I think it's, I think it's important to point out that none of us like to increase fees, but we need to keep our infrastructure in good, good standing. And our, my understanding is our water rates are very reasonable relative to statewide water rates. Is that correct, Michael?
Yes, that is correct. We're one of the lower ones. And we are the lowest in our, in our area from this time.
I think that's important to point out.
Well, I too think we should point out that the, our water department here in Buckhannon takes very good care of the water system. They do a lot of good preventive maintenance and, which has enabled it to stay afloat this long. City sister, sister city in Elkton has not been so fortunate and they are having to replace theirs at the cost of millions and millions of dollars. And all we're doing here is just simply plodding along, doing things, keeping it going. And I think it's a, you know, three, four bucks attitude bill for that. Knowing that you're going to have good, clean water is, is a small price to pay.
Ready for the question? All in favor signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. As have it. Thank you, David.
You're welcome, Mayor.
Anything else you have?
That's all I have from you.
Okay, that brings us to comments and announcements. Hey, Thomas?
I'd just like to make a couple of comments. One, I want to thank all the, the people that responded to individuals that had a lot of issues with the, our recent storm. I know there are some concerns occasionally when you go out and you shovel your sidewalk or your driveway and then three or four hours later, the plows come through and you've got a three or four-foot little burn there. That can be very frustrating, especially with this kind of snow. It's very, what they call heart attack snow. It's not easy to get that stuff out, but I think we all have to exercise patience and consideration and we need to keep striving to, to do a, a good job for the city. And I think people responded real well for, again, that they did last summer during our issues. I also would like to encourage people that have not yet voted, get out and vote, whether you're a Democrat or Republican or an Independent. And I think one of the issues we face in our country, whether it's in local, state, county, or federal elections, is that we need to use common sense and learn how to compromise with each other so that we can provide really good services to our citizens, residents of our different locale, counties, state, and federal areas. Get out and vote if you can and if you haven't had a chance to do that, that's it.
Pam?
Where are we standing with the Tucker Street property? It seems to me like nothing's moving there right now.
It seems the same way to me. We'll, we'll follow up on that and see.
I drive by there almost every day and about twice a week, maybe I see a truck there that loads a little bit of debris on that truck and then I don't see it again for another week. It's going to take till Easter to get that place cleaned up if we don't do something about that.
Well, they have six months, don't they?
Well, seven's going to take. By permit, I think that's correct.
I do have a meeting tomorrow with the city judge regarding the complaint and I'll talk to him about that. Perhaps he'll decide to remind the individual involved that they need to speed that process a little bit.
Anything else, Pam?
Yeah, also, I'd like to also encourage people to get out and vote. To me, if you don't get out and vote, you don't have a voice with anything. And I particularly like to encourage women to get out and vote because we've only had that right for 90-plus years. So ladies, get out there and vote.
Thank you, Pam. John?
I just think hardship's always shined a light on the excellent service of the people that work for the city of Buckhannon and county as well. I think it's really excellent. Also appreciate Michael's good communication about that stuff. Been really good to know what's going on. I appreciate that. I also think it's brought out a lot of, it's always nice when, I think Buckhannon always has a tolerant and positive spirit when this stuff goes on and that's really cool. I love you and continue that.
Thank you. Rich?
Just a couple of comments to appreciate the hard work of the numbers street department and other city departments that have been out there working very hard to keep roads clean downtown. This morning, they were out right in early removing the snow downtown. Really, the extra effort they put in. Would also note that partly from an outgrowth of the storm in June, that the city has, has always had a webpage in recent years, but that is housed here so that if in fact, city hall loses power, which it has not this time around, there is also a Facebook page, which is not housed here. And we endeavor to keep both up to date in terms of the services that are available in the city. Again, this time, there was actually no shortage of water within the city. The city system was operating at full capacity and I think that's very well said for the operation. They did not always have main power, but they were able to operate with local generators and standby power that they always have available. So I think it's a real hats off in this kind of a heavy, wet snow that we were able to maintain city services without interrupting. There's been a few complaints, but there's always going to be a few complaints. There's been a few complaints, but there's always going to be a few complaints. That's all I have.
Ron?
Ditto, everything everybody said down the line, especially the part about getting out to vote, because unfortunately voter apathy in this country has brought us down to where we are now, and I think I would love to see 100% voter turnout. Spacing an election is as important as what we have now. The other thing is, I'd like to thank the water department for doing all they could and for the city of Buchanan. I'm real proud that we were able to help the PSDs out with some of their problems with no generators, and we had the, we had generators that we were allowing, were letting them use, so it kept water to all the citizens of Upshur County, and we are all in this same boat together, so God bless.
Scott?
Ditto as well about voting, and John, well done by all of those in service, but I can't let this opportunity go without saying a special thanks and recognizing the volunteers in our fire department, and I stress the word, volunteers, they are not paid. There's a core group, and I am not one of them. I did not make as many calls as I wanted to over the last 72 hours, but there's a core group of guys who volunteered and were there day in, day out for trees down, lines down, and at 2:20 this morning pumping out a basement in Hodginsville, I think it was. So we have a great number of people in this city, but special thanks to those who volunteered to do this, just out of community service and the love of our town, and I'm sure Mitch Tacy would have said the same thing tonight had he been here.
Thank you, Scott. Michael?
I didn't get on the agenda, Clemens took me off.
At his request.
Yeah, at my request, I can't lie. A couple of things. Jay hit on his portion of the National Guard Armory Conference Center, and I wanted to update on one more we stand for my end. We have been working with the Guards General Counsel, still working on this leasehold interest agreement that'll actually be between the Guard and the Buchanan Building Commission, and we're also in the process of working with USDA and the Guard to secure several reports from the Guard in regards to environmental, historical, and their architectural reports as far as the Guard facility and conference center are concerned. Jay, as he mentioned, is working on those environmentals and historicals on behalf of the Water Board and for the wireline. Another thing of interest is we're getting ready in the spring of next year to start our Gateway East project on East Main Street, and if you recall at the last council meeting, Jerry Arnold approached council about submitting an intent to apply for funding from the West Virginia Division of Highways Transportation Enhancement Funds for Gateway West, which is West Main Street. We received notification about 5 o'clock this afternoon that, or this evening, that our project was deemed eligible. The deadline for the actual application is February 15th of 2013. We're estimating that the funding request will be approximately $300,000. This grant will be an 80/20 match, and we can use our street department labor and equipment as a portion of that match. I will prepare finalized costs to council prior to actual submission of the grant by February 15th, but there's a lot of planning and the things that have to be involved, and with the holidays rolling around and, you know, who knows how much snow we'll have, I'd like to request that council authorize the city of Buchanan to submit the transportation enhancement application to the West Virginia Division of Highways for Gateway West. Again, prior to submission, we'll run that project back through you to see if there's any questions, but we'd like to get your blessing to pursue that application. There's some work that'll need to be done.
You need a motion for that?
I'd not approve or approval, I guess. I don't think I need to form a motion.
Is there any objection to proceed?
No objection at all.
Proceed. How about, how about the Spring Street, is that going to be applied again also?
The Spring Street, the Town Square?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. We're taking the information that we received from the Division of Culture and History. They have provided some comments based off of our last application. Jay Harper has been working on that with other individuals, as well as the city, and coming up with a new, better application for that, and once that's released for submission, we'll be applying to that as well, and I'll notify you prior to that submission as well. We were not approved, I don't know if you knew that, David? We were not approved.
Yeah, I knew that.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any questions for Michael? Way of announcements, you've probably heard by now, but we've moved trick-or-treat to Monday night, beginning at 5 to 6 o'clock because of the change in the clocks, and we're invited to be sure and know about that. We don't want kids to be denied their candy, and that's all I have. Nate, we already passed your request, we already approved it, but do you have anything you want to say to us relative, this is Nate Kennedy with Scout Master, Troop 128?
This is a joint venture between the Boy Scout Troop 128 and the Cub Scout Pack at 128, and like I said in the letter, we will be distributing flyers on Monday, the 12th, and we'll also be going back starting 9 o'clock Saturday morning, the 17th, to pick up food that's been left on the porches. And this is a service project that the troop has been doing for many, many years, probably many years before I became involved with the troop, which was 10 years ago. We, due to numbers, we actually dropped out of that project for a couple of years, and I'm glad to say that as of about a year and a half ago, we're back on track, and now we intend to keep going with this service project.
Good to hear it.
Thank you, Nate.
You're welcome. Appreciate what you do, it's a good thing for us, for young people to be involved and helping others, and this is a great project, and scouting's a great organization. Does anybody else have anything?
Mayor, the Moose will be doing their annual.
And the Moose is doing their annual thing on Monday night as well. Yes, that's correct. Thank you, Pam.
And so's the county.
And the county, yeah. County's doing the trick-or-treat also, Monday night. Anything else from anybody? Okay, and we're adjourned. Thank you all for coming out.